Otherwise, your name won't be up there. So with that, let's hand it over to Marty.
Okay, today is March 30th and we are having a special board meeting of the Salem Kaiser Public Schools. It's now called Order. This meeting is all virtual. We're all in different locations today. And this is entirely online with public access through a link provided on the agenda and is also being broadcast on CCTV Channel 21. Board members, I need to know that you're all present. I believe you all are, but I'm just gonna do a quick roll call. And we'll start with Satya. Are you present?
Yes.
Sean?
Present.
Kathy? Kathy? I know Kathy was present. There she is. Jesse, are you there Jesse? I don't think Jesse's with us yet. I haven't seen him log in. Okay, I'm here. He's gonna be late, okay. Danielle?
Here.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay, great. So everybody's present except for Jesse, who will be late. Please keep your mute button on, mute unless called on, so we don't hear any background noises. I apologize ahead of time. If you hear chirping in the background, I'm in a room with five week-old baby chicks and they don't listen when I tell them to be quiet. Modifications? And I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent. She's gonna have slides on the screen and the exec members will be presenting various parts. Go ahead Superintendent Perry.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you virtually. This will definitely test our skills again today. So I thought the purpose for this section of the meeting would be to update you on our closure status, let you know what we know today, let you know what we think is still coming, and try to just give you some overview. So if you'll move on to the next slide Linda. The way I've organized the time. See, here's our first test of our technology.
And I don't know why it's not moving.
Okay, we're good.
Can you trace the... Oh, here we go.
All right, so we're gonna work through the main focus areas just as we were organized last time. So we'll go through what we, where we are with supplemental learning, mental health and student services, childcare for healthcare and emergency responders, breakfast and lunch programs and operations, human resources, community outreach and partnerships, and technology. Technology has been a big one the past few days. So Linda, go ahead and move on to the next slide. So here's what we know to date by executive order. Our schools are closed through April 28th. Right now, we don't have any indication of what happens next. We do know that about mid-April, they will make a decision about whether we reopen on the 29th. Our requirement as of today is to provide learning supports and supplemental services to our students and families, including meals and childcare. Our, we can call employees to deliver limited learning and support services, and we have been doing that. We've, and I know John will talk about this more, but we're asking people to come in versus requiring people to come in for our special projects other than our 12-month employees who have been working even since the closure. We are required to pay all of our regular employees during the closure, and then mental health services is supposed to be done between Oregon Department of Ed, Oregon Health Authority, and the Department of Human Services. That part of the governor's order is directed at OHA and DHS, but I do want you to know we're doing our best to pay attention to how we can do mental health support for our students during this time. So that's why that is one of our subgroups that we're working through. So once we got through the governor's order 20-8, we moved on to the executive order of 20-12, which is new since the last time we met, which is the stay home, save lives. And what I pulled out of that order is what impacts us as a district. We are supposed to be work-at-home employees whenever possible. We've designated an officer to establish, implement, and enforce social distancing in the areas where we are required to provide onsite service and where our employees have to come to work. That person is Cliff Carpenter, our Director of Safety and Risk Management. We, our childcare is now with a maximum group size of 10, and it has to be stable groups. And we need to still prioritize the childcare needs of our first responders. And very directly, once again, it requires us that if employees are in the at-risk category, they need to stay home. There was no requirement for staff to show up on work site today, but we did have all staff report to work virtually today on our licensed staff. The closure will be reviewed mid-April as they know more about the spread. We must pay employees, which I repeated earlier, and we must adhere to the provisions of Executive Order 2012. So with that, I think Linda, you're next on.
Yep, okay. Can you hear me? All right, so on March 26th, we received guidance, additional guidance on long-term school closure. This came directly from Colt Gill and ODE. And guess what? We have now introduced another acronym. So Supplemental Education and Learning Supports, now affectionately known as CEELs. That guidance provided us a little bit of direction. The purpose of CEELs to create continuity for learning, center equity, and support educators during the school closure. ODE continues to tell us that they are working to develop further guidance and provide resources. We've had a couple targets, target dates for release. The CEELs guidance was supposed to be published to the website over the weekend. As of Sunday evening, that hadn't been posted, and I checked again about two hours ago, and that still was not up and available. So as soon as we get that, that will help.
We're having a little issue with our online link and not everyone who tried to access.
Yeah, I'm hearing from CCTV that it was stuck in preview mode, but it's live now on YouTube.
So are we good to go now then? Do we need to start over?
I don't think, it looks like we're live now with the link, so.
Do we need to start over is my question. This is Marty.
I think Paul Decopoulos is.
Well, I think we need to make sure that, that the, that the public heard the announcement that this is a public meeting, so I would at least start there. Can you, did CCTV not get that part? Because if they didn't, you should simply recall the public meeting to order. Say who's here, and then continue on.
Okay, so today is March 30th. We have a special board meeting. There was a little bit of complication, so we're restarting part of the meeting. This is all a virtual meeting. We're all in different locations. And this meeting, which is on Channel 21 as well as YouTube. All board members are present with the exception of Jesse, who will be late. There are no agenda modifications. And board members are keeping their phone or computer on mute unless called upon. And administration, I guess you can pick up where you left off, or you can start over.
The meeting to this point has been recorded, and so it will be posted in its entirety after this meeting. So I don't think we need to revisit it, since it will be there in the record.
Okay, great. Okay, then continue on to wherever we were at.
Thank you, Chair Hyun. So we're at the last, last statement on this slide, and that is simply an informational reminder that the specific guidance from ODE on the graduation requirements is not yet finalized. And so information for our graduating seniors and for students enrolled in grades nine through 11 is still coming, and we will await that information for our high schoolers.
Can I just weigh in for this for a second too? I just want to say, just so people hear it, that we are feeling pressured by the same pressures that our community's feeling right now around our seniors. And we wish this guidance was out as well. As soon as it's out, we will go into high gear, working on what it means for our seniors. And the last I heard, it was supposed to be still by the end of the month, which would be tomorrow. So keeping our fingers crossed for that.
All right, as we have received some guidance from ODE, we have started building plans for our own staff. So this is some guidance that we provided to principals and teachers as they returned virtually. So we are calling this Week One. Teachers are back on staff, working virtually. And so Week One, our goal is practice and skill maintenance, not new learning. We are being clear with people that as we move into academic content, we are supplementing and not providing a comprehensive program. However, enrichment opportunities are encouraged. We will be having conversations with staff about how to promote audio recordings and video conversations for kids to engage with. We have been clear that when we move into academics, we are not assigning or collecting work from students, and grades will not be issued. So as a, just sort of a checkpoint, this week with teachers coming back today, we really are focusing on connecting with kids and families. So checking in, welfare checks, do kids have access to technology, are families able to access the food at the distribution sites, really focusing in on the social emotional aspects of connectedness and the sense of belonging for our students. But, sorry, does someone have something to say? Okay, but teachers are already asking really good questions about academics. So we have just framed a little bit of that for them as well. And so you'll see those points at the bottom of the slide. Supplemental education and learning supports. The student is not earning course credit. The work is not graded. We're not counting this time towards instructional hours. This is optional participation. Not focused on new content, again focusing on review and maintenance of skills. And the primary focus, like I mentioned, is on student belonging and connectivity for their well-being and mental health. We did receive some very specific guidance from ODE in the areas of assessment and accountability, and so we really appreciate it when we get this level of specificity from the department. And so we're hoping that as the additional guidance comes out, we'll have this level of specificity in other areas as well. Here's what we know. ODE has agreed to suspend statewide summative assessments, so those are our Sback tests in English Language Arts and Math for all grades three through eight and our 11th graders, as well as the science assessment in grades five, eight, and 11 for this school year only. So those tests are administered anywhere between January and end of May, and those have all been suspended. The essential skills requirement for the Oregon diploma has also been suspended for our current seniors only. There may be additional guidance on what this means for future, for our 11th graders, our current juniors, but right now, our 12th graders will not be held to the essential skills requirement to earn their diploma this June. If schools reopen on April 29th and secure test environments can be provided, then we will still hold the ALPA exam. That's the English Language Proficiency Assessment, and that's for our kiddos who are learning English. That's the manner in which they demonstrate proficiency to be exited from program. Finally, ODE will not identify new schools for targeted supports based on any data from assessment data collected this school year. Schools that were identified prior to this school year will continue to receive supports into and through next year as well. And those accountability details reports that are produced with state report cards, school report cards, and district report cards, those accountability details will not be included in next year's report cards for data for this year. Here are some specifics of what we've done, just in a three-week layout. So last week, we really jumped in on pre-planning. We encouraged our principals to take their spring break and to spend their time with family. And so during spring break, we posted online supplemental learning activities. Those are available to anyone off the website. And we started with preliminary distribution of hard copy learning packets at our 35 lunch distribution sites. So this week, we're focusing on connecting and specifically targeting social emotional learning. So today, our staff began learning the team's online platform. That will be the manner in which we conduct business internally across the organization. Throughout this week, teachers will be calling each student individually to check in. They will be asking survey questions about access to technology. Do you have a laptop or an iPad or some sort of device that you can use at home? Do you have Wi-Fi? Are you able to access food? This week, teachers will be working to design social emotional learning activities or lessons. Thursday and Friday of this week, Chromebooks will be checked out to students. That's available to any student K-12. And we will continue to distribute hard copy packets of some of those supplemental learning activities. And then moving into next week, as we begin to look ahead, you'll see that the transition for next week really is beginning to move into academics. So we will have continued phone contact with students. We will continue to work on SEL skills. But next year, we be, or next week, we will layer on the academic lessons, targeting those opportunities to practice previously learned skills. And finally, just to give you an example of what next week could look like, this is a very early draft sample academic schedule. This would be looking at students in grades six through 12. So asking that kids have an opportunity to engage in a grade-level social emotional learning lesson every week. That they engage in some sort of skill-building activity in reading and math for material that would take them about an hour. Students in some of our middle schools and high schools will be able to access iReady reading and iReady math because they already have login accounts to those programs. We want students to be able to engage in a book of choice reading for an hour a week, and to be able to engage in some supplemental academic work. We're looking at things that would contextualize, how do we braid social studies and science with language arts? How could we look at some STEM courses that would be meeting virtually with, with kids? And how can we continue to promote electives and things that keep kids engaged? So that's what we'll be looking as we move ahead into next week, which we affectionately call Week Two. All right, from there, I believe I'm handing it over to Jim.
Okay, so for mental health supports, very much like what we reported last, last time. Again, our counselors are, are learning the technology platform, just like the teachers are. And figuring out how to meet with students virtually as well as other staff members and each other. They'll connect with students and families. We'll be building systems for requests. So as students want to request a conversation with a counselor or parents, we have built an application basically online, and, and the counselors will track that and be able to account for all of those contacts. We'll distribute information on our crisis resources for families, and we'll do that a couple of different ways. We'll have a hard copy at our food distribution sites as well as we'll distribute that out with our teachers through, through our staff to our students. And then number five there, develop tools for teachers to provide access for students. Again, same thing there. We have already, many of the ways that we access our mental health supports, including our outside providers, are the same access processes that we've, we've practiced in the past. We'll just have to make sure our staff is all aware of those again, and then enable our students to connect for teletherapy and, and those types of activities. And then we'll, we need to really get serious about how do we, how do we, in a long-term basis, provide those mental health needs ongoing, work with students with disabilities and, and 504s. Attend to our students experiencing homelessness and what are the special needs they have. And then our students that have special medical needs, that's an issue. We know that students have, that have challenge self-regulating at school, very likely have challenge self-regulating at home as well. And how do we support families and students with their behavioral concerns? And then our English language learners, that's another specialized type of instruction that we're gonna have to get really creative to figure out how to serve our students and our families in effective ways. And then last of all, we need to make sure that we're supporting our, our staff, our administrators, our parents, and our community with those mental health supports as well. Because we know that as we are more, as we're more isolated physically, we have to find ways to be healthy mentally, individually when we're separated. So we'll need to practice those things and get going with some supports for people. And I think that's for Melissa now. Or Eric?
Yes, we got off to a good start today with a live event with all of our case managers and board. When I'm referring to case man. With IEP meetings and how we provide supplemental services appropriately. For this first week, we're trying to assure them that we're centralizing all the supports out of our student services office. And that means like for some of our teachers or SLPs who have tried to schedule their own IEP meetings, we're going to take care of all of that so that they don't have to be concerned about that element of it. And we're gonna be clarifying what supplemental services need for them. For this week, the three main goals are for them to get familiar with the platform so that they can communicate with one another and with their families effectively through that. Secondly, we want them to be contacting all of the students and families on their caseload this week. And, and also some of them started IEP meetings, or completed IEP meetings when they received the announcement that was, school was closed, and we're not able to finalize paperwork. So this week, they're going to try to finalize the paperwork for those events and give us a picture of just how many IEPs we're looking at that will need to be completed. We're estimating right now, we have between 600 and 700 IEPs that will need to be completed between the beginning and end of April. I would just note on supplemental services, one of the questions that comes up often is how are we gonna provide the minutes of specially-designed instruction that are in the IEP? And while we're in the supplemental services mode, that is not a requirement under the law. The main concern is that when we provide supplemental services, that we are thinking about accommodations and in some cases modifications that might be needed for kids to access resources. And I would just give you as an example, if the teacher wanted to send out a document to kids in a classroom, and one of her students had a visual impairment, she would be able to make that accessible by getting on the phone and reading the document aloud to the student. So that would be accessible to them. So we'll get through this week with those goals I just mentioned. Next week, we intend to provide additional clarification on supplemental learning. And we're gonna start working on setting up the IEP meetings. We hope to be able to do that and get going on that sometime next week or no later than the week following to remain compliant with particularly our one-year IEP requirements under the law.
All right, I think this is me talking a little bit about childcare. So, and I would be remiss if I didn't just let everyone know it is Jim Orth's birthday. So we could all send him a digital.
Happy birthday, sorry.
So the first, the first thing we needed to establish with our childcare is who qualifies from our community members. And so we established three tiers. The first one are medical professionals who are, who are directly involved in the cure, in the care and treatment of COVID patients. And those were the people who signed up first that we were able to serve last week. Most of them came from Salem Health. We did have someone from the Silverton Legacy Hospital as well access our services last week. This week, we've moved into Tier One and Tier Two. So these are essential workers within the healthcare system overall. This also involves our police and sheriff and EMS, EMT, our firefighters, people who work in long-term care centers, and then nurses, doctors, and pharmacists who work in supporting clinics. And so you can tell Tier One is a pretty small group, and then Tier Two is expanding to include essential workers within the healthcare system. And then Tier Three are essential community workers. And so these are people who are responsible for transportation, for food distribution, a lot of city services, folks who work at places like the City of Salem or City of Kaiser, Chariots, Winco Distribution Center, places like that would be essential community people, but not directly related into the, the healthcare that, for patients who are infected with COVID. So here's our ramp-up and implementation plan, and no good childcare would be, would be complete without a really cute picture of a kid. So there's our cute picture of, of one of our Salem Kaiser students. So we have, last week, we focused on East Salem Community Center, and we had about 20 to 25 students registered last week. This week, we currently have over 30 kids enrolled. We had 20 kids there today, and so we're in Week Two. And we're gonna expand the program. Depending on the ages, we could expand up to almost 70 students at East Salem before moving over next week to, to Swiegel. And then Week Four, we will just continue to expand as needed. For instance, if we get a lot of babies, and remember, we're serving kids who are very young up to preschool, and if we get some of those kids in, we could bump over into the Chamekada site because we are well set up to treat babies there that we already have classrooms with the materials there. So, so we'll kind of expand as needed as we continue through.
So hang on just for a minute, Craig. I just wanted to say that Jesse has joined the meeting, and so we have everybody on board.
Thank you. Welcome, Jesse. So our, I think it's important to note that with, with the childcare in particular, and I know Lillian will talk about this in a few minutes, but we have a lot of really strong community partners that are working together to be able to provide a net of childcare throughout our community. So we're working with SCEF. That's our Salem Kaiser Education Foundation to be able to provide childcare at one of our school sites, primarily for those Tier Three employees that I discussed earlier. Salvation Army has partnered with Community Action. Community Action will be providing childcare for infants up to preschool. And Salvation Army at the Croc Center will be providing for, I think they go down to five years old, up to 11 at the Croc Center, and they can take up to 100 students. They're just starting this week. And then we've been working really closely with the Early Learning Hub and the Information Line 211, and they're both serving as references. And they're helping us link to become more collaborative across all of our different service partners. So we are not the only game in town, providing childcare and daycare, and we're all working really well together to be able to, if people, if childcare or daycare is preventing someone, to be able to provide. to be able to provide any essential service, we want to help take care of that for our community.
So what I'm seeing, what you really have gotten a sense of how our operations have changed because of the situation that we find ourselves in. So this is really, we're in a modified operations stance right now. And we've moved, we've evolved from the emergency or short-term focus where we started out and pretty much at our last meeting, last board meeting when we briefed you up to modifying district operations in the ways that others have just presented to you. And we're supporting the essential services and guidance that's included in the governor's executive orders. And so you can see the areas of focus that we have currently are around food services, childcare, our facilities and auxiliary services, transportation, medical, technology, safety, security, risk communications, and community partnerships and supplemental learning. Really where we're focused now with the District Operations Center is the logistics associated with providing all of those services. Just to give you a highlight, as Craig said, we're ready to help continue to support the childcare program as it scales up. Also more of the community partnerships that Lillian will be talking about here shortly. We're at a place with our food service where we're operating out of 35 school sites and two apartment complexes, and we've reached a sustainable delivery of about 15,000 meals per day. And we're spending our time this week determining how best we can increase that capacity in a sustainable way as we move forward into the next several weeks. And then the other thing for the District Operations Center, Superintendent Perry had mentioned is that that's the central function for enforcing social distancing. And we also have ongoing operations that haven't stopped. We have our bond program, we're continuing to deliver on schedule, we're shifting to virtual design team meetings. As you know, all six high schools are in the process, either under construction or in design. McNary and North are heading towards the finish line still. McKay and South are beginning construction activities and Sprague and West are finishing their schematic design. Just to give you a sense, we're spending about seven and a half million dollars a month in the, in the economy on the bond program, and during the summer, we expect that to double to over 15 million. We also, we're, you know, we're in the budget development process and SIA as well, and of course, things have changed a bit since we started those processes. So we're in a slowdown mode and continue to assess the situation. And we'll most likely be moving the budget committee process into May to adjust accordingly. The other thing I would say is we have our regular business and human resource functions that are continuing to operate. So we're maintaining continuity of operations with routine functions, business functions such as payroll, accounts receivable, payable, purchasing, and contracting. And just to give you a sense of our average monthly payroll that we're continuing to distribute is over $40 million a month at this time of the year normally. And so we continue to do that and happy to do that, quite frankly, as a way to help support the economy as we move through this process. And John can speak to the ongoing HR functions of the district as he's up next.
Great, thank you, Mike. As Mike mentioned, the place that I'm going to start is just to remind everyone that the HR department and functions and services have shifted to be provided largely remotely. We have a very small number of people coming to the LPC building, but as needed and maintaining social distancing. But we're learning about how to provide all of the ongoing supports that allow personnel actions as well as information necessary for payroll to happen. And that, as of three o'clock this afternoon, was off to a good start. To reiterate a couple pieces that people have talked about, the governor's executive order was clear that all employees will be paid. And as Mike talked about, that's no small task payrolls have been excellent in helping facilitate that process. It's important for our employees to know that as part of a continuation of pay, there's no break in insurance coverage. And during this time of transition, there's no use of leave accruals. We do ask employees to be available for work, especially starting today. But if they are in a category of at-risk or caring for a member of the household who's at risk, does not require the use of leave. We are restoring leaves that were used during March 16th through the 27th during the time of transition. As we've mentioned, staff may be required to work in order to provide essential services. And we know that that will have a varying degree of impact on individuals based on the work that we need done. And we are being clear to provide staff direction to work as home, from home as much as possible. And I included the reminder here about those that may be at risk. We have by no means want to do anything that would further jeopardize somebody's health and well-being. We want to keep that at the forefront of all of our personnel actions. And as I mentioned, employees self-identify. We are not asking for medical documentation. We do not want to further burden our, our medical systems and we certainly trust and value our employees' ability to self-assess on that issue. We are going to be making an effort to rotate work between staff who are working and especially as it relates to employees who may be asked to leave home or come to a district site. We want to limit their exposure as well as balance the work opportunities. And department supervisors and principals are going to be directing the work for staff as it relates to the supplemental learning that Linda and others talked about and special education. The district will help with some larger functions in terms of the staffing need like childcare. It's important that we highlight that staff may be asked to perform duties outside of their regular job description and/or they may be asked to temporarily report to a different supervisor. This is being kept to a minimum where possible, but since we are in this state of modified operations, it also requires from some additional flexibility. And the district has had a fantastic response already to some opportunities for staff who can elect to participate and we're not requiring their participation for activities such as distributing Chromebooks to staff and students. And I would like to let the board know that with an announcement of needing some assistance at our six high schools later this week, we had dozens and dozens of people sign up to help within the first five minutes of a request that went out today. So that was very encouraging and a great reminder of the eagerness of staff to step up and assist in this time of need.
Our staff is awesome.
They, they are awesome. So we're off to a great start and I'm going to turn it over to Lillian.
Great. So as I shared last week, we started working with the Marion Polk Food Share.
Can anybody else hear?
Can't hear you, Lillian. Can't hear you, Lillian.
Amazing educators showed up.
Lost you again.
I think we're having some technical difficulties right now. So hang on, everybody.
Satya, your dog is extra cute today.
Okay, so I'm in Christie's office where there's a stronger wifi signal. So I'll start over. As I shared last week, we've got, we began our partnership with Marion Polk Food Share and our awesome educators showed up this week on Wednesday to help unload four pallets of food from that truck into the gymnasium at Marion Polk Food Share, boxed it all up and distributed it. So we were able to go through all 200 boxes of food in that 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. window. We know that the need is obviously very real. And so following that, we had another call with Marion Polk County or Marion Polk Food Share to see how we could build on what we had done. And using our transportation resources, we will go to Marion Polk Food Share this week with our truck and load five pallets of food onto that truck. This allows them to use their transport resources to go and help other areas of the community at need. With those five pallets, we'll be able to distribute 250 boxes from that 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. window. We advertised it to the families in that Four Corners area, being hesitant to share it too widely because we didn't want to run out of food too quickly. So we will continue to work on that partnership with Marion Polk Food Share. And we are really appreciative of how easy and wonderful they've been to work with. Using those food sites as our limited access point for how we connect with students, we're working to add on additional supports. So the Early Learning Hub is going to supply a donation of books for our little ones that can be collected at those sites. Mission Salem Church has been supporting at Leslie with food boxes, same with St. Timothy at Hoover. SCF made a donation of goodie bags and apples and oranges. We've got a call scheduled this week with the Can Centers Network, and they are looking to develop more wraparound services at these schools. We know that the longer this emergency closure goes on, the need will continue to grow. And so how can we use our limited touch point there to help support the community? We're also using it as a place where we're distributing forms, so in district trace forms, school language program forms, and packets of supplemental materials. I was lucky enough to man the table at Four Corners last week and for the first time ever, children were approaching me, asking me for homework. So I was happy to provide that to them and will continue moving forward with that. We also, last week, were able to go and collect all of our personal protective equipment in all of our classrooms, science labs, CTE programs, so that we could make a donation, a van full of materials to Salem Health, and that went to them on Friday. And I'll pass it to Bob.
All right. In addition to just scaling up all of our platforms to support a work from. That's pretty cool to see. In the end, we distributed 450 Chromebooks to.
Excuse me, Bob, you might want to start over. You cut out, I don't know if yet picked up by CCTV or not.
Sure. So we've today distributed 450 Chromebooks to classified staff. That was at McKay High School. We are planning to distribute Chromebooks to students starting Thursday and Friday at our six comprehensive high schools. We have about 10,000 Chromebooks ready to go. I sure hope that's enough. Internet access is still a issue that we're trying to solve. We have ordered 1,000 hotspots and we're looking at how we can partner with other resources. And I will, maybe Lillian can help provide that answer from Danielle. For the hours, but we're working with Comcast and Wave to find out what our options are to increase access within our community. This morning, we got off to a rough start, but Christie was able to livestream her message to, I believe we had a little over 2,000 people on the live events and another 300 on the phone call. And then figuring out the infrastructure to support 42,000 phone calls being made to students. So that was quite the exciting challenge over the last two weeks, but I believe we got it figured out how to do it using the Microsoft Teams platform. We have over 2,000 teachers with new phone numbers.
So Lillian, could you give us the hours of operation or hours of pickup for the Chromebooks? Do you have those written there somewhere?
Yes. Oh, let me come to you. No, I can hear you. I got a notification that my connection was unstable. I'm muted though. No, okay. So tomorrow we'll be offering the Chromebooks from 12 to 6:30. No, sorry, not, not tomorrow. I don't know what day of the week it is. On Thursday, we'll offer the Chromebooks from 12 to 6:30. And then from, on Friday, we'll offer the Chromebooks from 8 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. So that way we can try to accommodate people's schedules if they are available in the morning or the afternoon. And if they don't have their student ID, they can just provide a student ID number. All of our teachers will be making contact with students this week, and so they can ask their teachers when they get that contact what that student ID number is if they don't know it.
All right. One other thing I wanted to add is on the Marion and Polk Food Share, the distribution site at Four Corners, we did ask SKEA if they could get volunteers for us. And so in a matter of minutes, SKEA had educators there for that day, and I think they're going to help us lead the volunteer effort around the food distribution sites.
We've got a plan for the rest of.
We've got a plan for the rest of April with volunteers out of SKEA. So thank you to SKEA on that. All right, I think Marty, we'd be ready to do.
Any last questions?
Question, Jeff. Marty?
Yes, we're going to go around the virtual room to ask questions. And I'm asking everybody, well, first I want to give a big thank you to Superintendent Perry and her cabinet for all the hours they have put into this and for the presentation. So I will call on each director to see if you have a question. Please do not provide background information for your question. You'll be asked for clarification if needed. Just ask the question. And we will start with Satya. Do you have a question, Satya?
Yes, thank you. You know, thank you very much. This is very exciting, even with this difficult moment, you're all coming with some beautiful ways to creatively solve this problem. If the need arises and if we are required to have schools as a place where it will become a quarantine space, have we identified some schools? If the number of cases in our community goes up asymptomatic case and they need to be quarantined.
Oh, I'll answer that. We have not at this point, but we would take our direction from the Oregon Health Authority on that. West at this point.
Thank you. Was that, was that it, Christie?
Yeah, the, the only thing I was going to add is that we are, already have that strong connection with the Red Cross as well, and we're on the weekly daily phone calls with our community partners.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do you have a question?
I do. I have a question regarding executive order 2018 or 2008 around paying regular employees. Like this is probably a question for the superintendent. I'm a little confused. So we say. I'm a little confused. So we say, I've heard us say that we're paying all employees, and then I've heard reference to regular employees. And I've heard reference to 12-month employees or less than 12-month employees. Can you clarify, are we actually paying all of our staff? Or are there any of our staff, because of their status, are not being paid right now?
I can't hear you, Kristi.
I can't hear you.
Try again, Kristi. Kristi, we couldn't hear you. You were on mute.
Oh, I'm mute? I'm still muted.
You're good.
Okay, sorry. I'm thinking about this backwards. All of our regular employees, so classified is the trickiest because we have nine-month employees, 12-month employees. So, but yes, all of our regular employees, nine-month, 12-month licensed administrative classified. We've also are paying some of our hourly Avid tutors because they're considered regular employees. The one employee group that we do not have a good way to pay is our substitute employees because they're not regular employees. And John, did I miss anything on that?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing that except for substitutes, all of our employees are considered regular employees and receiving pay. And for our substitutes, those people who were scheduled to work up through the week prior to spring break, who had accepted jobs with expectations of that work will be paid for that time as well. And as we continue to move into these modified operations, there may be opportunities for substitutes to accept work. And we're being vigilant about looking for those opportunities as we want them to have the opportunity to work when we need them.
Thank you. Jesse, do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, I have a question. So ODE assessments were suspended. So my question is for grades three, eight, and 11 who won't be having the tests, will we be giving them the test in grades four, nine, and 12 instead, or are we just not gonna do it at all? I can't hear you, Kristi.
Mute. Okay, we won't do it at all for any of the SBAC testing, which is grades three through 11. No SBAC testing.
Okay, thank you. Danielle, do you have a question?
No question.
Paul, do you have a question?
I do. I was, my question is for Craig. We're looking at childcare. Why did I not see Family Building Blocks as one of the contacts he had? Or using their services?
So Family Build, I'll start my video here. So Family Building Blocks is one of our community partners, and they are centralizing their services on families that they've previously been, they've previously been servicing. The state forced all previous childcare daycare providers to reapply as emergency childcare daycare providers. And if they didn't apply, they needed to shut down their services. And part of that was to centralize the emergency first responders. So we have been in communication with Family Building Blocks as well as a lot of other ones in the community as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll go around again and see if there's additional questions. Satya, do you have an additional question?
Thank you, Chair. This question is, we are having this operation. Now, how are we working with that if there is a critical incident command for our county? And how are we overlapping our operations with that? So as to make sure there is no duplication and people all know where to go, who to call?
Mike, do you want to weigh in on that?
So we're in communication with the county and state emergency management functions. And so if things escalate, we'll be part of a unified command if that's what's necessary. So we'll just have to wait. And as Kristi said, you know, we'll take our direction from higher authorities in the state and in the region.
Thank you, Mike. I'm so sorry, Kathy. Don't be mad at me. Kathy, do you have a question? Kathy, do you have a question? I missed you the first time around. Not on purpose.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
My question's for Eric and pertains to the special ed department. And the kind of feedback we're getting from parents, are they feeling that they're being fairly treated and receiving services? I know you mentioned some other supplemental services, and I'd be interested in knowing what kind of supplemental services we're offering.
Okay, Director Goss, the big event for this week is for us to reach out. We want to make sure that every family is contacted directly by their case manager. And so that's an important aspect this week that's going to be happening. Remember supplemental services for our students in special education right now do not involve core instruction or grades or homework. It is mainly focused on maintaining the skills that they have. And so 75% of the kids in special education are going to be able to utilize the resources the district's already put out. But we're also focusing on the 25% that are more severely impacted. And we're putting together a plan for what supplemental services might look like for them, which might include being able to access a unique learning systems curriculum that we have in our district that we use primarily with our developmental learning centers and our life skills population that are more severely impacted. So we will have more definitive information about those types of services for our case managers and our families for next week. But we are planning on being compliant, of course, and providing those services and doing our best to make sure that they're accessible for our students.
That sounds good, Eric. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shawn, do you have a second question?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse, do you still have no questions?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, I don't have a second question. Danielle, do you have a question?
No.
Paul, do you have a question?
Nope.
Satya, do you have another question?
Yes. The United States Department of Education has kind of relaxed this requirement for children with disability, especially during times like this. And from what I'm hearing is there's a lot of paperwork burden for several hundred IEP students. And is there any move to relax the paperwork burden? So that teachers who are also struggling in their own lives, their own families with all the consequences of this pandemic are not burdened with paperwork burden, but instead they can be more available to support the families and also take care of themselves. Because if you're going to talk about paperwork, should not become a barrier in providing this care is what I'm hoping. Is there a way we can use this as a way to justify a little bit loosening up on this so-called paperwork burden, which can be enormous for our teachers?
Director Shonda Gary, right now we are following the guidance that we have, and it's been pretty specific about our annual IEP meetings. We need to remain compliant on them. We realize that a few are already late because of the two weeks that we've been off. But through the, through the coordinated effort through our office, we're gonna make sure that we get those scheduled and that we are able to stay compliant with our annual IEP meetings between now and the 30th of April. One thing that is relaxed a bit right now is that we have some kids who might be in the process of being evaluated for initial eligibility. And under state law, we have, we're on the clock with school days. So it's a 60-school-day time requirement for initial evaluations and IEP meetings if a student is found eligible. But since we're on a school-day clock with those types of things, and we're not in school right now, those are relaxed for the time being. We want to make sure that we also don't get back to school and have our case managers buried with too much work. And so we're going to try to do some aspects of those initials, but the main focus is on being compliant with our one-year IEP meetings.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have another question?
No, I'm fine now. Thank you very much.
Danielle, do you have a question?
I do. It's for Mike. Last time we, I asked you some questions about food delivery and getting access to students. And I've heard from Superintendent Perry in various formats that the increases, or there's, there's been an increase in need and that you've been working to achieve that. Have you guys worked towards expanding the access opportunities throughout the community outside of the sites that are currently present? Like, two best jobs?
Yes, we're in the planning mode right now. The first thing we needed to do was shift production from the central kitchen facility into the 35 school sites, which we accomplished last week, and then stabilize production and capacity, which we have to about 15,000 meals a day. And so once we've got that stabilized, which we feel pretty good about, we're going to be looking at expanding delivery into more apartment complexes. And so we're generating the list of where they might be. And that's kind of what our thinking is at this point. And we also want to be able to use other than yellow buses so that any staff with a license can drive an, can drive an activity van. And you won't need a CDL. And I think that that will give us more flexibility as we look into, we look deeper into the communities.
Okay, thank you.
Going around one more time. Satya, final question?
This is, as this wave continues with a lot of people losing their jobs and this stress, over 50% of Americans are struggling with anxiety disorders right now. And our community is also going to be burdened. We're gonna have a surge in this. So what kind of quick triage or whatever steps our teachers are likely to become the first responders? So how are we kind of gearing up to take care of this? There's not enough referral pathways in the community for so-called licensed therapists. And for all you know, the teachers may end up being the first responders. And what kind of support are we providing teachers so that they can fulfill that role without falling apart themselves vicariously traumatized?
So just a couple of comments on that. One is the teachers, as they start calling, we do know that they're gonna hear some of that. And two things, one is they, we have a referral process outlined. That's what Jim described from our mental health team. So our mental health team is really thinking and has instituted a referral process for our social workers, our school psychologists. And then the other thing, when I launched today, we're talking with our licensed staff, is we're really trying to stay focused on being sure that they're taking care of themselves too. So we do, we're hoping to have some sort of care teams in place that our licensed staff and our classified staff can check on each other through this. Because we do know they're gonna hear some things that will, they'll be anxious about as well. So we do think we've got at least a start of a system. The other thing is Marion County Behavioral Health is expanding their service right now. So we've gotten some communication late this afternoon about that as well.
Thank you. Kathy, any more questions?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Shawn?
No more. Thank you.
Jesse?
I just want to say thank you to Kristi and your staff for all the work that you do, teachers and our classified staff, everybody for, you know, for the volunteering and really helped get us through this. You know, we couldn't do without you guys. Thank you.
Danielle?
I have nothing.
Paul? All right, that concludes the questions then. I gotta bring my agenda back up on my screen.
While you're going through that, I'm gonna make one more quick comment. Sorry, Marty. We are sending a phone dialer out to our community tonight as well that just outlines that we don't have the graduation guidance and we're working on supplemental learning. So kind of a status update to our community through our phone dialer system.
Great. So now it's time for public comment. We provided a link for people to submit public comment for today's meeting. Lillian Govis, our Director of Community Relations and Communications, that's kind of a tongue twister there. We'll read the public comments that we have received. Lillian, did we get any?
We did not get any public comment related to the agenda.
Thank you. And just for the public's knowledge, we were only taking public comment relating to the two action items for A and B. So we will move on then to our action items. Our first item is in regards to suspending our requirement to, ours as in our school board's requirement to have the majority of our board members present in person at a regular board meeting until such time as the governor's executive orders are lifted. Can I get a motion for that?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Danielle. May I get a second?
Second.
Who was that? Was that Jesse?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Anybody have anything that they want to talk about?
How, yes, I do.
Go ahead, Paul.
How will we verify that someone is actually at the meeting and not hiding behind a mask or two? And it's actually someone else?
I know your voice, Paul. Or we could require no masks allowed.
But I could be calling in and no one would ever know.
Who's that man in the headband?
So why do you have a mask on then? If you're concerned about that, take the mask off so everybody can see you.
I am, I am making the point that you all don't actually know if I'm sitting here. And if we don't, and so how would the public or anyone else ever know if they're actually at the meeting or not? Because we could sit behind a mask or just not illuminate our screens, turn off our video.
Kathy, did you have a comment?
I did. So maybe we wouldn't know, but in all likelihood, everybody's working together trying to move forward. And I think that's pretty insignificant, frankly.
I got a note from our board secretary who said we can verify by phone number. And so if we can't see you, if you're calling in on a phone, we're actually gonna be able to know that it's at least your phone. And I think we probably all recognize everybody's voices, Paul. Is there any other discussion on this?
Yes, Chair.
Satya, go ahead.
Yes, I, one of the discussion I really wanted to bring up is, is we need to have this mechanism available even beyond this emergency. Because with every crisis comes an opportunity to learn something. I don't want us to waste a crisis. As far as Paul's question about the voice and the thing, you can, there are a lot of biometrics you can do. Voice recognition can be your signature. There are a lot of ways in which you can harden it. We don't need to spend all the money. But let's talk about reasonable steps to ensure that if we, seven of us cannot be authentic, then it kind of defeats the whole purpose. But this crisis has taught us, we need to have more than one way of doing it. We need to be flexible. If we directors cannot be available in more than one way, then we should not be able to, I don't think I have any ethical ground to ask Kristi or her crew to be proactive. So I really propose that just beyond this emergency, we need to have this as a Way to take care of future emergencies rather than each time there's a crisis, we keep fixing it. And then wait for another crisis. That's my suggestion. That's why I didn't want to support as it is written, but with a modification. That we need to have the ability to participate in this board meeting in more than one way. Not just insist on physical persons. This is a modern day. This crisis has taught us, we cannot be doing business as usual.
Thank you, Satya. And, uh, so this particular action item is only related to the emergency right now. But we can, uh, readdress this policy in a future regular board meeting. And look at changing it so that we don't have to have special, uh, changes made in an emergency. Are there any other comments?
Chair Hyun, I really think, I know this particular proposal is for that thing. But can we not have an amendment to this proposal where we could say? This should be an option that should be available moving forward.
You can make a motion, or you can make a motion for, uh, for an amendment. Satya?
I would call for the vote, Marty. This is Sean.
Okay, I think I need a second for call for the vote.
Yeah, second that. Call for the vote.
Okay, all in favor of calling for the vote, say aye.
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 So I heard. I heard Danielle, or Danielle, I heard Jessie and I heard Sean. And I hear anybody else?
No, but I did say aye.
Okay, okay, so it passes. So, uh.
Motion, excuse me, Madam Chair, you might want to check with Paul. But a motion to close debate requires a two-thirds majority.
Does it? Paul Decopoulos, does it require one more vote to end discussion on the amendment?
We don't even know if that's Paul.
And to vote, well, the call to question actually puts the vote on the, um, original motion. To temporarily suspend the physical in-person requirement, right?
To end debate is a, is a motion and it requires two-thirds, two-thirds of the body to agree to it. To close debate on anything. So if we're closing debate on the total, on the motion, then it still needs two-thirds if we're closing debate. If it's not voluntary closure.
I, yeah, I don't think you can call the question while they're still pending, um, motion to amend. So I think Paul's correct on this.
Oh dear, I wish he were here.
Uh, so we can't call the question, so that means that just, or Satya gets to finish with his motion? Is that correct, Paul Decopoulos?
Well, he's still, he's still speaking to his motion.
Okay.
There, I, I can't, I now can't remember. Has there been a second to his motion?
There's not.
No.
Yeah, okay, so is there a second?
If, if there's no, if there's no second, then the mo, then the motion to amend dies. And you're back to the original motion.
Okay, uh, Satya, would you repeat your motion, please?
I, Chair Hyun, I would like to, uh, make an amendment to the motion that. The option to participate in the board should include more than physical persons. Using electronic or virtual options, uh, not only for this emergency. But for future situations where it may be required.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to Satya's motion? I'm not hearing a second, Satya. We will come back to it at future time. I promise, or at least if I'm still Chair, I promise. Okay, so all those in favor of? What? Is there any more discussion? Sorry. Any more discussion? Yeah, I'm not hearing any more discussion. So, uh, I'm going to do a, a roll call, I think, so I know who's voted which way. Uh, so who is voting yes? Uh, Satya, are you voting yes for the original, uh, amendment? Or the original motion, sorry?
I am voting yes, because that is the only motion. There's nobody seconded my motion.
Right, okay. Uh, Kathy?
Well, I, I guess I'm unclear what I'm voting on. What motion was made and seconded that we're voting on?
You are voting to suspend our requirement to have the majority of the board members physically present. At a regular board meeting until such time as the governor's executive orders are lifted.
With that last portion, I, I would vote all right for it. But I don't think we want to get into changing policy other than during emergency.
Right, well, we can get into changing policy at a future meeting. Uh, Sean, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
High vote, yes. Danielle?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Okay, so everybody votes yes except for Paul Kylo. All right, now we will move on to. Let's see. Our next item is for B. It is a resolution regarding an exemption to our bidding process due to needs around the COVID-19 requirements. Superintendent Perry, uh, would you like to review this item before we get a motion?
I'm just going to, and I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Operations Officer. Uh, basically, this is, uh, twenty nineteen twenty-six resolution. And we've run into a couple of contract, uh, already. Emergency closure and asking for a little bit more authority to, um, do expenditures outside of, um, our traditional practices. Um, just because of the urgency. So Mike, could you walk them through the resolution, please?
Yeah, so, um, and I'll defer, uh, some of the more specific legal questions to Paul Decopoulos as, as we move forward. But basically, um, the board, uh, declaring an emergency, which is commensurate with the governor's declaration of the emergency. Um, this resolution provides the district with the ability to rapidly respond to emerging needs. Um, by being able to enter into contracts. Um, with the resolution language that you have in front of you. So essentially, um, the board acts as the district's local contract review board. And, um, can make the emergency declaration, which again gives us the flexibility to meet needs. That we don't perhaps even know are coming our way yet. Um, but as Satya had mentioned, if, if, uh, things begin to escalate and we need to move into more. Um, emergency management mode again, uh, working with the city, the counties and perhaps the state. This resolution positions us to be able to move quickly in that direction. Paul, did you want to, Paul Decopoulos, did you want to add anything?
Um, thank you, Mike. Just, just that, uh, we don't know what we don't know. But we want to be ready for it. And so this may, uh, never occur, but if, if there was, uh, the need for an, um. An immediate decision on contracts that the superintendent would have to have board approval on. Specifically to address, uh, the governor's executive limitation, or the governor's executive orders. Uh, the, the current ones or the ones in the future. We wanted to make sure that there was enough flexibility, uh, for the superintendent and, and the chief operations officer to do that. Uh, with the caveat that the board would be kept apprised in writing. Uh, if, if this needed, needed to be exercised. And this would only apply, uh, narrowly to the, the list of things in the, uh, governor's executive order of March sixteenth. Um, that, that, uh, Christie and her staff have already gone over today. That supplemental education services, uh, transportation, meals, et cetera. Uh, so it's a fairly narrow, narrowly tailored, um, uh, resolution for the board. That just gives the administration some needed flexibility. If something came up that we never thought about and it needed to be acted upon immediately.
Is that everything, guys? Mike?
Yes.
Christie, is that all? Okay, uh, do I have a motion to?
Do we have discussion first?
Oh, no, we do motion, second, and then discussion.
That's right.
Uh, so do I have a, a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty-six?
So moved.
Thank you, Sean. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I second.
I heard Danielle. Thank you. Okay, now discussion. Jessie, do you have a question?
I was definitely before Danielle, but it's fine. Uh, yeah, I do have a couple, actually. Um, anytime that we're giving up, um, authority. You know, I think it's important for us to understand completely what it is we're doing and why certain things are being done. Um, and this is us giving up authority, because you see in this in any, any movie where authoritarians come in at all. Not that I think you are, Christie, I think you're awesome. But, um, looking at this, I, I have a couple of questions. One of them is, um, I just want to be very clear. Does this only, when does this end? So we're giving her the, the administration this authority now. When, what is the deadline for this authority?
So I would say the deadline is when the emergency is over, because this authority only applies to the governor's executive order. And the implication of what our requirement is. So if we're looking at, um, the executive order twenty oh eight, right now that order expires on, uh, April twenty eighth. And it's not an expenditure that I could go after related to the executive order. So I can't decide to go out and do an over fifty thousand dollar contract unrelated to supplemental services or any of that. So that's a great question, though.
So Jessie, before you ask a second one, let's see if anybody else has a question. Uh, Satya, do you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the question is, it says above fifty thousand. Is there an upper limit? And if, should we put an upper limit to it? And is there a mechanism to keep the community involved or bring down the bidding process time? Uh, you know, that way we can keep the community involved in this kind of big ticket items.
So.
I think it's. I think the contract is stating that anything over fifty thousand needs to come to the board. And anything under that, they have authority to decide on. Is that correct, Mike?
Um, not quite. Basically, what it's saying is, um. Right now, the superintendent and her designee, um, has the authority to enter into contracts. Um, based on, um, policy governance. We enter into million dollar contracts with, uh, construction for the bonds. And, and we don't bring those contracts to the board. Uh, what this is saying is very specifically, and you can see section six on the screen. Um, that we would, uh, we would be suspending, um. The ORS two seventy-nine B, uh, requirements that would allow us to move into emergency contracts. To support the governor's executive orders. And any contracts over fifty thousand, we would notify you in writing that we're doing it. That's different than bringing them forward for approval.
Paul? Okay. Nope, nope. Was there more?
I didn't know.
For that answer?
I didn't think Paul Decopoulos.
Okay, Paul Decopoulos, do you have anything to add for that?
Uh, no, I, uh, I think Mike's fully described it. Uh, again, when we put this together, um, we didn't have a particular contract in mind. But we wanted to protect against is if we have to quickly move on something that's mission critical. To comply with the governor's order. Uh, we want to be able to do that. And, and if, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, we would want to notify the board. Here's what we've done in compliance with the executive order. Um, just to streamline our operations, uh, particularly in the month of, of, uh, of April.
Okay, um, I don't remember who we left off with, so I'm going to start with Kathy. Do you have a question?
Uh, I don't have a question. I'm comfortable with it and will be supported. I think it gives time at the board to react. And I think it's best to be set to do whatever needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I don't have a question. This is common practice, I believe, in emergency situations. And I've looked at the language about what, uh, has been put in place. Um, and, and I support the district's, uh, plan. Thank you.
Jessie, since I let you go first, we'll come back around to you. Danielle, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I guess I don't really fully understand it. I understand that it can be common practice, but if it's something that the district, if the district's already making decisions. Um, under the executive limitations, I don't know what the point of this is really. Is it adjusting the budget that's currently approved and in place and that's why it needs to come to us? And if so, how do we shore up the funding that's being spent in these new areas? Um, if it's not already outlined in our budget?
So let me, uh, you want to, I'm going to give the phone example, uh, contract. Is that a good one, Mike?
Uh, yes, it is.
So, um, we knew about a week or so ago that, um, we needed to figure out a way for our staff. To have access to, um, phone dialing of some sort from home. So that we weren't going to ask them to use their own personal devices. The, um, cost for that came above the five thousand dollars. And so I had to, um, declare that this was an emergency situation. I needed to, um, go ahead and procure that, um, outside of getting three competitive bids. But when I did that, we, we were like, we better bring this to the board. So that as we have more of these, they know that this is how I'm going to need to proceed on some procurements. So that was a fifteen thousand dollar contract for, uh, getting our, um. Our phone lines in place so that every licensed educator has a phone line within their teams to make those calls home. So that's an example of something. I can, I can do it and declare it as an emergency. But it gives me, um, greater, uh, comfort to know that you know I'm acting in this sort of an emergency fashion. And not going out for three bids at time when something is very, uh, timely that has to be done. Had I not made that decision on a Saturday, we wouldn't be where we are today with our phone calls and being ready for phone calls. So that's an example, but it doesn't, it's hard to do that outside of the board saying this is an emergency. And there will be some changes in how we, uh, procure. Had that been more than fifteen thousand dollars, I would have felt uncomfortable making that decision.
So to be clear, this is just waiving the, the process of going through the three RFPs?
When there's an emergency.
Yeah, in this particular scenario. Okay, then I support it.
Yep.
Paul, do you have a question?
Paul's questions have all been answered by Christie's last answer.
Uh, sorry, Paul, I can't see your face, so I don't know that it's you.
I know, that's what I said.
Okay, uh, Satya, do you have another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify, is this only for financial expenses? Or let's say in the next step, the governor declares that code in a solitaire. That means you restrict the movement of people from one hotspot and prevent them from going to another part of the town. I hope this will not require you as, uh, the district CEO, like superintendent, to start putting some kind of, uh, contract. To prevent people from moving back and forth. You know, it's a, I'm not trying to paint a doomsday scenario, but these are all possibilities. So I just wanted to clarify, is it only for financial expenses, this particular, uh, proposal is brought? Or is it for implementing other kind of restrictions in the community moving from one part to another?
No, this is.
It's only, it's only for, I'm sorry, go ahead, Christine.
It's only a financial resolution at this point. Um, and in some ways, um, your authority is, um. Circumvented in some ways by governor's executive order. So, um, this is a financial only related to procurement, but in a situation like that, if that were. So this is a financial only related to procurement, but in a situation like that, if that were an executive order from the governor, I, I would have, as a public official, have to comply with the executive orders from the governor.
Thank you very much. Thanks for clarifying it. Other don't want down the road people second guessing about this.
Marty, we can't hear you.
Sorry, guys, they still had it on mute. Kathy? Final question? Sean, final question?
No, thank you.
Jessie, question?
Yeah, well, Christie answered my other question. So the only other one is, why 50,000? What was the reasoning behind that number? Was just a random one picked or what?
I can, I can, I can jump in on that. Just given the routine nature of contracting and procurement in this organization, there's a lot that, that flow between, you know, 15 and 40, 45,000 all the time. Once you get above 50, we felt that that was a substantial number. Now, remember, we're a $1.2 billion corporation, so we're, we're talking about things above 50,000. And there was no, there was no magic formula to come up with that, other than just the normal course of business.
Cool. Thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Danielle, do you have another question?
No.
Okay. Bringing back my agenda. So we'll do a roll call for voting. Do you have a question? You know, Paul, if you want to ask a question, you can move your mask.
That's fine.
Did you have a question, Paul?
I did not.
Okay. So we'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor of the resolution giving the exemption to the bidding process during this emergency signifies by saying yes. Satya?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Marty? Oh, that's me, yes. Danielle?
Yes.
And Paul, I shouldn't call on you because you keep hiding your face, but Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
Paul, you look good today.
Oh, so that's real special. Okay. We're moving on to a system test. So before we adjourn, we're going to conduct a test of a call-in system for a public comment. This is just a test, no actual public comment is going to happen. This is a new process, so thank you for your patience as we see how this works. And hopefully this will work great, and then the public will be able to use this in the future. Callers, when you're, it's your turn, please state your name, city of residence, and the topic you will be speaking on. Erin is our moderator for callers. Erin, do we have any callers?
Yes, we have a couple of people in the waiting room. I'm gonna admit our first caller.
Thank you.
They have joined the conversation.
Go ahead with your testimony. Go ahead with your testimony.
They may need to unmute themselves. Okay, there you are.
Hello, go ahead.
Hello, hello, my name is Sandy Price. I live in Eugene, Oregon, and I have the pleasure. Um, hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Sandy. Yes, Sandy, we can hear you.
Perfect. Oh, there's a lag. Okay, that's interesting. Okay, so my name is Sandy Price. I live in Eugene, Oregon, and I get to be an employee of Salem Kaiser School District. And my topic, the thing that I'd like to ask you today, is how all, how are all of you doing? Is everybody keeping safe and healthy?
Well, thank you for your question. We don't normally answer questions with our public testimony, but we appreciate your concern for us. Is there any more that you want to say?
No, I will give some feedback to Erin and Alice on, there's sort of this lag time piece, and so as I'm saying this right now, I'm hearing you answer my question. So it's a little disconcerting, but I think we'll figure it out. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, we will figure it out. Thank you for being the very first person to do this. So Erin, do we?
My pleasure.
The answer is heck, yeah, Sandy.
Okay.
Erin, do we have another person in our waiting room?
Yes, we have another caller, and I will. They have now joined the conversation. I will need to unmute them. Okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Heidi Vitschfield, and I live in Salem, Oregon, and I just wanted to tell all of you that you're doing a great job, and we appreciate your efforts.
Well, thank you very much, Heidi. We appreciate the feedback. Erin, do we have anybody else in our waiting room today?
We have no other callers at this time.
All right, well, then that is the end of our meeting, and we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending our very first totally virtual, nobody-in-the-same-place meeting. Have a good day.
Thanks, Marty. Nice work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. You're awesome.